You ready? Okay. Okay, I am going to call the, what are we? The Wednesday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four combined open meeting of the Northborough School Committee, Southborough School Committee, Northborough, Southborough Regional School Committee, and Northborough-Southborough Superintendency Union to order. But I will call the Regional School Committee to order. Kelly?
I will call Northborough to order.
Kamali?
I will call Southborough to order.
And Kelly?
I will call the Union to order.
Okay. We have one remote person, but that remote person is on Region and Northborough and Union. So we will have to have roll call votes for those three committees. But Southborough, you can just raise your hands. Do I have to read that? No.
No.
All right. That being said, our first order of business is public comment. Seeing none, our second order of business is the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four Superintendent's Evaluation Process and Timeline.
Sure, so in your packet is the five-step evaluation cycle that I presented at the September Combined Meeting, and just wanted to review what to expect in the next couple of months. So on March thirty-first, I will prepare the end-of-cycle report on goals and focus indicators, and that will be sent out May tenth, an official Google form with the collection of evidence to support progress toward goals. Then on May twenty-fourth, I will meet with the chairs to review the draft evaluation. And then at that point, May twenty-eighth through June seventh, the chairs will have an opportunity to draft the evaluation. And then on June tenth, I will meet with the chairs to review the draft. And then lastly, the final evaluation will be presented in open session on June seventeenth. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And just a clarification, in this particular case, the chairs he's referring to are the Chair of the Regional School Committee and the Chair of the Superintendency Union. Any questions, comments? Okay, there being none. Are you done?
I am.
Okay, then we, onto the, I gotta check. Onto the next agenda item is the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five Wellness Days.
Sure, so as you all know, that this year we added four Wellness Days to the district calendar with the thinking of how can we provide opportunities for students to have evenings that really are homework-free, workload-free from school events, so that they can focus on their wellness. I think overall, there was strong support to continue Wellness Days, but there was strong feedback that the timing of the Wellness Days and the placement of the Wellness Days presented a real challenge. And because they were aligned with some religious observances, they were mostly scheduled in the fall of twenty-three, and it really put a lot of pressure on semester courses and educators where they felt like they lost learning time. And as a result, many students experience either pre additional work or post additional work from, as a result of the Wellness Day. So taking the feedback from students and faculty and staff, what I am recommending is not having four Wellness Days, but having three. The dates are November first, January twenty-ninth, and April seventeenth. And making sure that those three days are divided equally in the calendar. So one is in the winter, uh, the fall, one is in the winter, and then one is in the spring. So again, we can really focus on making sure that the impact to students isn't more additional work on those the day after or before. And also really to hear, to listen to the feedback educators shared around their concern that it was challenging the way they were scheduled this year. So the other, for class and the other feedback data that we received from educators and students was, from students, it was a request to have no school on Wellness Days. Or if that isn't feasible, to have half-days. Educators also mentioned that the fact that they need additional professional learning time to accomplish all of the new learning that's taking place as a result of curriculum adoptions. Just think, or in the field, and asked if those days could be early release days. So I'm recommending to have those three Wellness Days next year be early release for students, and profession, and then the remainder of the day will be professional learning for faculty and staff. I did provide a spreadsheet which you're definitely very familiar with. So I think it's, I placed it at your table in front of you, so you should have a copy. And the question really is, you know, are we the only district who has half-days? And how many other districts have half-days? And it does vary from district to district. I would say that we are on, the North and Southborough Public School District is on the lower end of districts on this list, that the number of half early-release days for professional learning ranges anywhere between seven and up to thirty-five. So there, you know, so the request is, we currently have seven, one, I think, the day before Thanksgiving. We also have one at the end of the school year, one, and then we have parent-teacher conferences, and then one, I believe, before the December break. So this would add three, so we would have, I think, a total of nine as a result. And again, the primary purpose is to provide more time for educators to engage in professional learning. So do you happen to answer any questions?
I know you asked me this last, so I'll go fast. April seventeenth, is that really close to vacation?
Yes, so that is, so Good Friday, it's Good Friday on the eighteenth, and then we head into April people break. So it is the day before Good Friday.
So it's Thursday, half-day Thursday, no-school Friday, and then April vacation?
Correct.
Couldn't do that this year when I'm going on a trip? Got it, perfect.
The thinking too is continuity, so not having a half-day on Tuesday, and then Friday is a day off. So just making sure that that seems logical, a lot of family travel.
Kathleen?
I think whether through the Wellness Committees or other work for the public to have a better understanding, I've heard, you know, it's been a bit to right the ship and move it in a direction, and it sounds very reasonable. And the notion that students should be prepared for grind culture, like they should just be working every day to be prepared for a relentless adult life, is really sad. And it feels as though the public would benefit from understanding the biology that underlies these decisions, the consideration of teachers, their requests for more time. That's what we saw during COVID, when they had more time together, they flourished, it seemed, from my, from my seat. So it would seem like some outward-facing information and support of people to really think about well-being over just submitting their children to grind culture for a life.
Oh.
So two things. The first is, I know that in your memo, Greg, you mentioned, you know, childcare and how making a decision early will help parents and guardians. For those parents who, you know, have nine half-days, and I know that only affects our elementary students, right, because they only have, well, middle school conferences, do you know if there's any, if there's any plan to partner with extended-day programs?
Yeah, so I think to Kathleen's point that we need to do a lot of work around what does that afternoon look like for students? What opportunities are there around wellness for students? So partnering with our recreation departments, our youth and family departments, our extended-day programs, really providing our parents with opportunities for the change in schedule that will occur. And that is something that we will work on, and I think Mary Ellen. So one of the goals too is to really educate and promote wellness on the Wellness Days.
And then my second question is, I know that you mentioned more professional development for educators. So, you know, our goal of Wellness Days is all these things Kathleen has been mentioning, but it's also to give students who celebrate certain holidays sort of that time with their families. And I think it's a great, great sort of way to then educate our educators on these holidays. So do you envision having professional development next year on, hey, here are religious holidays and observances our students partake in, and here's how you can wish them well, or here's some other practices?
Yes, so I think it is part of the work that we do at faculty meetings, on professional learning days, we do provide opportunities to learn about other cultures, other religions and observances, and we do try to highlight that. I think having these three additional half-days for educators will provide us with more time to, again, provide professional learning around these topics. I think one of the challenges teachers have is if you talk about stress and the wellness of an educator, it's that predominantly their time is in front of students, and they have very little time to actually plan and learn and hone that back. So this would be allowed for them.
Roger? No, go ahead, Roger.
I've been trying to figure out this chart, and I guess I got a little helper. It seems like it's sorted by Election Day, so that had to be sorted by something. So where are we again as far as, how many half-days? I'm sorry, that, are you proposing overall?
So there, currently there are seven.
Yes.
And then three more we'll be adding.
So we would, we would have ten?
Yeah, and I, honestly, the early-release day is the half-day before Thanksgiving is a half-day, the half-day before the December break, and the last day of school is a half. So those are built-in, which I don't really consider, they're half-days for educators and students. The early-release days are three conference days that we have now, and then we'd be adding three of the Wellness Days.
Does Groton really have twenty-five half-days?
Well, Concord, but that's all at K through five. So every Wednesday, Concord is a half-day. So like, the Groton, I think you're looking at, you're looking at what is an assumption of a K through five.
Kamal?
For the proposed new half-days, I'm just, is that enough time for the educators to learn what they need to learn during that PD time? Would their time on campus, wherever their school is, be, you know, not finish at two-thirty? So they, or could you describe how that would?
Yes, so it'd be a full day for educators. So, you know, upon the release of students, you know, we'd have school-based professional learning, and it would be for the remainder of the day. Is it enough time? There's never, we don't have enough, but it's more time, and I think it'd be greatly appreciated, and schools would make the most of it. So it would be essentially, you know, two and a half to two hours and forty-five minutes of professional learning on that day that we typically don't have.
With no extension to the length of days at the children?
Correct, that's contractual, so that would remain in effect.
Okay.
Sean?
Just want to clarify on the chart, does the high school have thirteen half-days currently?
So the high school? So midterms, yes. So it depends on the student's schedule and midterms. So many of our students could have an early release depending on where their exams fell.
Those are midterms? They don't have their own built-in half-day PD time?
Okay.
Kelly?
So these are almost like additional PD time for them? They're still gonna do the three before school, and then what, one or two?
So there are five contractually required?
Yeah.
And this would be three additional half-days added to those five.
So they're gonna be getting more PD from it, but losing learning?
And it's also the cadence and placement of the days, you know? The, the days don't always fall at a time where professional, professional learning is optimal. So having one in the fall, winter, and spring would allow us to have a cadence of learning throughout the year.
And I would just add, Kelly, to your point of like, and but losing learning, is that there are certain aspects of the PD that we sometimes end up pulling teachers and having substitutes, because we need a whole grade level together for something, or we need a department together. And so my hope is that it would reduce some of the need to, yeah, to pull teachers from learning. So I don't necessarily think it's a reduction in learning for students, because that need already exists.
Paul?
Years ago, I know half-days were an issue for the younger kids, and especially the schools, I think they had different half-days depending on school. And I, I haven't heard anything about that lately, so I just wonder, have we sorted that out? I mean, is it better now?
Yeah, we, I think we've worked hard to align half-days. So again, it's not variable depending on what school, and we would do this, you know, obviously these would align as well, but we haven't heard as many complaints, concerns from parents than that we did when your children were at the elementary level. It's improved, I believe, and I would look across the table.
I agree. It was, it was a lot, having three kids in three schools. Yeah.
I guess that's my concern, I'm not hearing anything from the K through eight folks, so it sounds like it's been sorted pretty well.
This was my first year experiencing the, the two different, like the, having a middle-schooler and an elementary, and they did have a, one difference so far. They've had a couple of differences. A couple, yeah, last week was one week that, you know, it was on Tuesday, one of them had a half-day, and then it was Thursday, the other one had the half-day, you know?
And that's in part because for the translation services for conferences, we can't have all of them at the same time.
All conferences, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, plus, I mean, if you have a elementary kid and a middle-schooler, I mean.
Yeah, I was about to joke, I thought you were thinking of us, Stephanie, I guess.
That too, that is part of it as well.
Yeah, I mean, you can, I mean, it's hard enough, I talked to parents that have two middle-schoolers, and they're trying to juggle conferences, like, add me the two kids, because there's thirteen teach classes.
To that point, I think what Bryce was starting to say is what came to my mind first, and I think Lauren's comments really addressed, kind of, I was gonna raise my hand, words out of my mouth. I have colleagues and friends in places like Acton and Framingham and other school systems where it's like, every Wednesday of November is a half-day, or a first Wednesday of the month, or these random days where they've missed the school meeting, or the university meeting, or this committee meeting, because they have to go home and pick their kids up at noon. So I think the focus on the continuity, like, before this break, or at the end of that break, has really, really helped and been important, because it's much easier to get time off of work or be flexible and be on Zoom or something around those times usually. So, and working with, you know, NADP and the rec center would be great as well. So that's, it's a lot less of a problem now than it used to be, yeah, when it was a random Wednesday in the middle of the month.
And it's potentially an opportunity for families to kind of extend the concept of wellness to the family. You know, that's some of the work we're, we'll move forward with as a Wellness Committee, and really thinking about what a wellness could, could be. It's not just an educational system, it's a community endeavor.
Yes. Hi, so I know that my perception at least of a lot of these negative feedback for Wellness Day placement was in part due to their, how close they were to the end of Term One, because tests tend to build up at the end of terms. Based on the, your perception of the schedule for next year, how close are these dates to the ends of those terms?
So we did look, we worked with Principal Bevan. They, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but we did take that into consideration.
So hopefully not too close.
Any other questions? Okay, then we are moving on to policy development and/or distribution. First thing is the update, what did I miss? Thank you.
Well done, Joan.
So in your packet is the, a draft of the school committee meeting dates for twenty-four, twenty-five, so.
So there they are.
There they are. Don't have to be voted on this evening, you can look at the dates, see if they work. Any feedback that you want to provide is helpful, and then we'll finalize the dates for twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
And what I would recommend is that you not put them in your calendar as cast in concrete, because they do tend to change over the course of the year, and sometimes you end up going to the wrong building for a meeting, so.
I'm sorry, did we need to vote on the Wellness Days?
No, because it's gonna be part of the calendar. It'll, it'll be part of the calendar.
Calendar discussion.
So that's what we'll vote on.
Okay.
The June meeting? When's the calendar vote?
No, that actually, I think Sean is correct.
Oh, we need to vote on it?
Because we did, we already voted the calendar at the last meeting.
Oh, of course.
So then this is the...
Okay.
Before we start the vote, I just, did the, the high school, the high school rep, did you get the answer to your question?
I will follow up with Mr. Martin and Mr. Bevan in the coming months, and make sure I'm on.
Were you looking for the actual dates, like?
I was hoping to understand the ends of the terms, because each of these dates seems pretty close to when they typically end for middle and high schoolers.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that you got that.
Curious, and the challenge that poses, or the benefit that has, is what? As they fall towards the, kind of, the end of the?
So one of the major issues from this past year, at least at the high school level, was that the Wellness Days in the fall, a couple of them were pretty close to the end of Term One. And so what that, what happens then is all of the tests that come as Term One ends start to be moved around due to Wellness Day, and then where they end up on the same days. So instead of since having five tests in a week, one in each day, it's having how many tests on a given day.
Two, three on any given day.
I have had some friends this fall who had four or five on a day.
But that was addressing the placement of the Wellness Days? We had three Wellness Days within a month and a half.
Yeah, so I would guess this, that this would change that based on it being spread out. I just wanted to see if, how reduced that problem would be, and it doesn't seem as big an issue as it was this past year.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, then it sounds like we need a vote. Okay, do I hear a motion from the Region?
I, I move to incorporate or accept the recommendation of the three Wellness Days as proposed.
So moved.
Moved by Sean, seconded by Chris. Oh, that's right, I'm doing, I'm doing, no, no. Well, no, I think we need motions for all, for them all, in case, you know what I'm saying? So, do I hear a motion from Northborough?
So moved.
From Lauren, second from?
Second.
Kristen? Okay. And do I hear a motion from Southborough?
So moved.
Second.
From, moved by Roger, seconded by Chelsea, and Union. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Kathleen?
Yes?
I don't think, I don't think we need a motion.
Oh, you're right, that's right, we don't, never mind the Union. Okay, so, any further discussion? There being none, it's gotta be a roll call vote, so from the, for the Region, I'm gonna start with Matt?
Yes.
Kathleen? Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And me, Kathleen, that is una, oh, Joan?
Yes.
It, is that your vote?
That's my vote.
Okay, and Kathleen, yes, that is unanimous. Okay, Northborough. Joan, for Northborough?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Unanimous. Okay, Southborough? Oh, it's, it's a, okay, so, for Joan's benefit, oh, you can see, that is unanimous on Southborough and Union. Oh, that's right, we don't need to do Union, okay. I need my eyes. All right, then, those three Wellness Days are, are adopted.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, policy development and/or distribution.
Sure, so the Joint Policy Subcommittee met on January twenty-fourth to continue its work on reviewing policies. I think the conversations were centered around policies on animals, school immunization requirements, the policies that you see that are before you on the agenda this evening. There was also a conversation around international travel, and really thinking about having, actually adopting an international travel, so that will be a policy that will be studied and brought forward, most likely in the upcoming year. I mean, it's not a new conversation, I believe we were on draft ten or nine, that there were probably eight to ten meetings and discussions and...
I think I just found mine from like two thousand seventeen, two thousand sixteen, like, the last time that we really got all the towns together to do it, yeah.
So we have a lot of good background data to, to think about international travel, and really, we have new committee members since two thousand and seventeen. So the policy, Joint Policy Subcommittee will take that up, have a conversation, discussion, look at example policies, and think about moving a draft policy potentially to the three committees or four committees for approval. So first readings, so we have policy on animals in, in school, I two fifty, and Mary Ellen, would you like to join us for, Mary Ellen was, worked closely on the policies before you this evening? So it's a first read, so any feedback and input to bring back to the Joint Policy Subcommittee is appreciated.
Chelsea?
Thank you. One of my questions is around the school hours on this policy, because I think we define our school hours as like start time, end time, and I'm concerned about drop-off and pickup, and whether those times are included in school hours or not, and if, whether we should define what school hours are.
And I think potentially, you know, that we should put a, have a statement here, no dogs on the premise during drop-off and pickup, specifically in addition to that.
Okay.
Is sporting events?
So we did have a lot of conversation.
Because I know we've gone back and...
A lot of conversation around sporting events. I think the challenge is that who's going to manage that? I don't think having dogs within the stadium complex, for example, at the high school is, is permitted, working on signage with Keith, making sure that we have proper signage, and just monitoring it, but we're not prohibiting families from bringing animals on campuses during off-school hours, and we'll, we'll monitor it during school events, such as a sporting event.
After that, Kelly, we did talk about, you know, dogs, dog poop, a lot. We talked about dog poop, especially I think Lincoln Street School, you know, the, people will use that as sort of like, dogs to run around. So I, really, we did just say, I think signage is the best way, there's no way Greg to be there on a Saturday like, hey, pick up our dog. So hopefully with some robust signage, Keith, we can get there.
I mean, I mean, the other thing you could do too, that like a lot of, like if you could find funding maybe outside of like our budget, is having like somewhere, like where people will walk their dogs, like have a sign and like bags, you know what I mean? So if somebody doesn't have their bag, they have it to at least be responsible to go pick it up. I mean, it's not, you don't want to encourage it, but if it happens, like you at least want it picked up.
I think also both communities are in the process of establishing dog parks, which, you know, currently, we don't have a place where we can say, you know, this is the place to bring your dog if you want to, you know, have your dog interact with, with other dogs. So that will be something that we will have in our toolbox, but we don't have now.
So just to clarify what Chelsea was saying about school hours, so you're saying no dogs on the premises for drop-off and pickup? A lot of people, I know at Proctor, walk their dogs to drop their kids off. It's a walking neighborhood, that's the joy of the neighborhood schools, is you want to have people to walk, so they also walk their dog.
So they also walk their dog. I know Proctor in particular, drop off is supposed to be at eight-ten. So you have to stay with your child until eight-ten.
And your dog.
And your dog. But you can't be on the premise now. So you're saying you're gonna stay away with your dog until eight-ten, which would be fine.
Yep.
If they actually let the kids go on the playground at eight-ten. It's sometimes not till eight-fifteen, eight-sixteen, eight-seventeen that you're now having longer time waiting with a dog that's not supposed to be there.
Yeah, I think the challenge is that this is, this is not an anti-dog movement.
Yeah, I mean, I just, yeah. I now have a dog.
Yeah, this is a, not all students like dogs or adults.
I will, my dog doesn't like Bryce. Doesn't like a lot of people, so I get it, like, I mean, he's very, he's a little, he's a little dog.
Well, that speaks to your dog's intelligence, so.
He's got a big bar, you know, and he's scary. And I, you know, and so I get it, I completely get it, like, but I'm just thinking how we're gonna... And, 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 or even setting parameters, like where is considered school ground? Like if you're saying, okay, you can stay back past this area, past that, like if there is a dog or friendly or area.
Yeah, I think Proctor, we could, you know, look at, every site is different.
That's what I'm saying, like, I feel like every school might have different...
You know, at Neary, for example, because that's where my office is, it's, you know, you could have four or five dogs close, in close proximity with thirty or forty parents waiting for their kids to exit school.
Yeah.
And again, for some, some kids and some adults, it's not a comfortable place. And for some dogs, it's not comfortable.
Smore does not like... Not, Smore does not like dogs, does not like...
So we will...
I'll take this feedback and any other feedback that you might think about. You can always email me and at the next joint policy subcommittee, we can consider those points.
Okay, Cass?
Is, so wait, I think this was discussed at a previous meeting. I'm trying to remember, for the policy, is it intended to be directly like telling parents that if you see a dog, is someone from the administration going up to them and saying, you can't have a dog here? Or is it only if there's a problem that they would, they would be alerted of that? Like how rigorously in place are we putting this policy?
Great question. I think that it's a delicate balance between principals' time and educators' time. And, you know, I think if we have a, if a principal or an educator has a concern about an animal on the premises, it will be addressed. I think that during the school day, in proximity to the playgrounds, for example, our parent pickup and drop off, we will be asking parents to not have their dogs on premises. And then also hopefully point out like, oh, there's a dog park you might not be aware of. And here's, here, here are the directions. And here's a poop bag.
This is a really good point.
Well, I wonder from a liability perspective too, if we have a policy in place that says dogs are not allowed at drop off and pickup or on the premise, and there was an incident from somebody not abiding to the policy, then hopefully that would not hold the school liable.
Liability would be on the dog owner.
Right.
I'm not sure in this town how animal control works. But if it falls under the police department, would the resource officer be engaged?
Yeah, I think the animal control officer, we, you know, we have had conversations. And when there is an issue, we do partner. But again, what we found is that person is extremely busy as well. But it is another resource for us.
I'm envisioning it's gonna be the newsletters, the weekly newsletters. Please remember, no dogs at drop off, pickup. Like that's gonna be like the constant.
Anyone else? Okay, then moving to second reads, so wait, hold on.
Uh, it does say in the policy that therapy dogs are not service animals. Is this trying to stop service animals? Like, no, right?
No.
No.
There's the definition between what a service animal is and what a therapy dog is. So that's just delineating the two, there's two sections. There's the service animal section, and then the second section is the therapy dog.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now any other questions? All right, then we're moving on to second readings, school immunization requirements. J one hundred.
So I need, this is the second read, so.
It's the second read.
If anyone has any questions that they have this evening, speak now. We have our resident expert.
Roger?
So, you know, I'm on the combined policy committee, subcommittee. I don't think we really had much discussion on this at all, did we, as far as between the first and second read? I think this just moved right through the subcommittee, just FYI. Correct.
Okay, then I'm going to take these separately because this one's slightly different. So, do I hear a motion from the, did I, did I ask for everybody's questions? Did everybody have any questions? Because I know I'm Steve Marley. Okay, then I'm gonna ask for a motion for the region to accept the school immunization requirements, J one hundred.
So moved.
Moved by Paul, seconded by?
Second.
Sean. Northborough?
So moved.
So moved by Bryce, seconded by?
Second.
Kristen? Okay. And Southborough?
So moved.
Moved by Kamali, seconded by?
Second.
Roger. Okay.
I think Joan.
Joan raised.
Joan, I'm sorry. Yes?
I just have a question. It looks on, on the agenda, it says that the J one hundred is for Northborough?
Oh, right.
And J one twenty is for Southborough region?
Yep, thank you for that clarification. Thank you very much. So, Northborough will be approving J one hundred, Southborough region will be approving J one twenty, but they're all called school immunization requirements.
Do we need to...
I think, I think the name of the policy is, the key, the numbers can vary.
Yeah, okay.
Could you just clarify that Northborough does say one twenty in it? Is that what you said?
Well, no, she's saying, no, she's saying that here, Northborough's is, is one hundred.
J one hundred.
And Southborough regions is listed one twenty because they must be a number.
Categories and labeling.
Right.
There's variation, so J, J one hundred.
In our packet, Northborough is one twenty.
Yeah.
Correct, so J one twenty is the, is this policy in Northborough because J one hundred is not available?
Right, but in the, but here on the agenda, it says J one hundred.
It says we're one hundred, so.
Is the, is the Southborough vice, is the other one? Southborough's one twenty as well.
So J, yes, you're saying Northborough's J one hundred.
Maybe we're all...
Wait, they're all J one twenty.
They're all J one twenty, is that just wrong?
Yeah, so I just, I just wanted to amend Northborough's motion then, because it's not, or I actually think all of us do.
Okay.
The original motion was one hundred, so.
Yes, the original motion was, okay, so.
I just want to be technical, it says they one twenty in our packet.
Okay, so.
So the, the labeling, I think we can go back and fix, I don't think that is key. I think the key is the title of the policy. Because I'm questioning whether it truly is one twenty or one hundred.
Oh, okay.
And the content is the same throughout.
Okay, yes. Okay, so we are going to approve school immunization requirements, J one something. And everybody's okay with, the actual number may change. Okay, so, region. I'm gonna start with Matt.
Yes.
Kathleen? Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen, Polacko, yes, so that is unanimous. Northborough? Joan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. That's unanimous, South, for Northborough. Southborough? All in favor? That is unanimous. And that's it? Okay. Next, so that, that passes unanimously. Next is child abuse and neglect, J two fifty?
Maybe.
Maybe?
Confirmed.
Confirmed, J two fifty.
So we had a second reading, and I think similar to immunizations, there are a few clarifications, but not any significant changes to the policy from the first reading.
Questions? Comments? Are we ready to vote? I'm gonna take the next two together, just because they're, they're both the same. So, can we talk about substance use prevention and education policy?
Sure, so, so in your packet is J three fifty, and similar to the last two policies, not a lot of changes from the first reading, but continued conversations at the policy subcommittee level. The committee, the policy really hasn't changed significantly from the last reading.
Okay, except the title is different in our packet. So in the title, it says teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, J three fifty.
No policy? Shouldn't, shouldn't...
I'm, I'm thinking the policy should be substance use prevention and education policy, is what I...
Or teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs policy.
Right, one or the other.
So I have to, Mary Ellen, do you recall?
Can we approve the context?
Well, I, I don't want to recommend that because I need to confirm that this is the actual, the new policy.
Okay, right.
So, my thinking is this is actually the old policy.
Okay.
In, in your packet, and not the new substance use prevention and education policy.
Okay, so we're gonna push that option next combined? Okay. Okay, then do I hear a motion for child abuse and neglect, J two fifty? From the region?
So moved.
Moved by Paul, seconded by?
Second.
Chris. From Northborough? Moved by Lauren?
Second.
Seconded by Kristen? From Southborough?
So moved.
Moved by Jen? Seconded by?
Second.
Kamali?
All in favor?
Don't go jumping on.
Don't, don't jump around. Okay, for region, roll call vote. Matt?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
And Kathleen is a yes, region is unanimous, Northborough. Joan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Passed is unanimous for Northborough. Southborough?
No, Southborough just gets tired of being last.
You get it easy, just raise your...
That's right, all in favor? That is unanimous, okay. We get, we got one passed. All right, now, update from the combined policy development subcommittees?
If anyone has any additional information that they would like to share as an outcome of those meetings?
It was really just that we were talking quite extensively about the international travel. So if any of you have been on the policy subcommittee before, back when, you know, what was it, two thousand seventeen?
So the only, so the one suggestion I have is to do it in person, versus do it on Zoom because there's so much in the policy to take into consideration. I think for time reasonings and people talking over or whatever, it's easier to do around a table versus computer.
Yes, Cheryl and I did have that conversation, and when that policy is reviewed or discussed, it will be in person.
Yeah, okay. I, I talked at our Northborough meeting at once about having a policy or something about fundraising, PTOs, things like that. I know the high school has stuff, Northborough doesn't, I don't know if Southborough does. So maybe a meeting between Southborough and Northborough to kind of get on the page of how the high school fundraises and things like that. With PTOs doing a lot of fundraising for the schools and contributions to the schools, there have been some things that have come up with reaching out to certain people. Like, if you reached out to the tavern, you know, oh, it says the tavern, so, you know, do we wanna promote alcohol? You know, type thing. So there's just things like that, that I feel like if we had a policy that said like, everything you can, can't do, it'd be easier for the PTOs, and it would be less...
Case by case.
And, and, and less wasting their time. You know, they, they did a lot of work and a lot of effort getting a lot of people to donate. And then to come to find out, ooh, we, we really shouldn't be promoting them at the school, kind of like, uh, okay.
I want to say that that was part of our conversation when we had the fundraising for the field, right?
Yeah, well, boosters and things like that, the high school has...
If you look at the policy...
Yeah, so that's like what Greg advised us to do this year, is just to kind of like use it as a reference for the high school, but...
That stuff did come up in our conversations, I can't, I don't know how we...
It was around sponsorships, didn't it?
Yeah.
Donations and...
Donation, sponsor, yeah. So I just think that if we can get that for the K through eight, the PK through eight, I think it would be helpful.
Take a look at it and see if there's anything. You should be able to pull most of it, possible.
So we did schedule a Northborough policy subcommittee meeting, so that should be scheduled. And I can have a conversation with the chair in Southborough, I know her well. And see if she wants...
Yeah, and again, Southborough might not have, because I know they do the SOS, and they kind of have one fundraising organization that does for all of Southborough, K through... Northborough has four different, plus the middle school, so five. So we've got five different PTOs, so that's five different organizations that are doing things differently. And so I think there needs to be some sort of guidance, because it would help also for the schools and the kids to be getting the same type of things and getting everything versus, you know, one school getting more or less.
So South, does Southborough not have four SOSs anymore?
They do, but I think they're all under, they're one umbrella. Like, I don't think that they have four tax IDs.
No, okay.
So they're one tax ID, so they file once, whereas I think it sounds like Northborough's five.
Five. Okay.
I don't, I don't know that for sure, but that's what it sounds like.
We all fundraise separately.
Yeah.
Oh, we have one treasure.
Right.
One treasure, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got five.
I mean, I will say the policy was well crafted. I think it pertains to each district, and there are situations in each district that we've experienced where the policy would provide some guidance and some guideposts as we take in donations and people wanna sponsor events. I think it is something to consider for all, you know, the, the PK through eight, Southborough, and obviously the Northborough district.
And I think also...
Or in the, the general policy subcommittee for next year, then...
We could, I'm just wondering if it would be a waste of time for the regional, but also maybe it's, it's sharing experience too, and the genesis of the policy creation.
I think too, it's, you know, one of the things that we, was brought to our attention at our last meeting by the PTO was kind of like, you know, well, why, you know, we, we just bought, you know, the curtain for the school, you know, for the stage or whatever, you know, and shouldn't that be something that a district does? You know, and things like that. So even if there is some sort of like criteria or explanation in the policies that kind of explain like, you know, I think it would help.
PTO versus capital.
Capital, budget, kind of things.
So it would be nice, easiest, if you could just adopt the one that's already done for the region. But you have, you guys have to decide if that works for you. Okay, any other requests, suggestions, comments about future policy subcommittee meetings? Okay.
Is there any, sorry, is there any update on the students submitted policy?
So, the policy subcommittee did talk about the submitted SAC policy. I think the conversation centered around what's the value add from Mass General Law and the policy. And I think that, Cass, you and I will have some more conversations and invite you to the next joint policy subcommittee to really, again, articulate the why you think it's important. So the conversation did take place, but no movement on actually firming up the policy yet.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
So, just before we clear out policies, is there, I didn't hear it tonight, is there still work being done on the policy regarding religious exemptions in school?
So that is not a policy that was taken up by the, the joint policy subcommittee at this?
It was raised as a concern from some of our folks coming into the calendar discussion last year, so it would seem relevant to...
Is it on, do we know what last year revision, when that's next up?
No, but we can...
We can take it up anytime.
Yeah.
I mean, we did do like, again, like, the last time we had a calendar conversation prior to the one we just had last year, we did go back and do a policy for religious holidays and homework and all that kind of stuff.
If I remember the feedback...
So is somewhat, somewhat of a policy?
Accurately, I know there is a policy, but there was, there was a lot of feedback that it put the emphasis on students to voice their wish to participate. And that felt like an onus that... that it put the impetus on students to voice their wish to participate, and that felt like an onus that need to be shift, needed to be shifted. And there, that was one concern, and then there was another just about what they are then responsible for or not responsible for as it pertains to today's activities, that they were or did or did not participate in. So that, that seemed like pretty consequential feedback that I think we should address.
Okay, we can take another look at it. Anyone else? Okay, now we're going to move on to personnel update, which is in your packet.
So Selvi Oyola, who you all have met, unfortunately, we've not been able to find a ELD teacher to fill her shoes. It's been a very tight labor market in that regard, and it's really important that we hire the right person, not just any person, to that position. So Selvi has been working closely with Rota, learning as much as she can, but she's also been making sure that the students that she, her caseload of students that she works with are being met, and we did talk about that as a, that is the first priority, to find the right person to take over, but it isn't what, what our intention was, where we would find the perfect person, that person would step into the position and Selvi would have some time with Rota really learning the position. It's, it's still happening, just not at the pace that we hoped for. The other resignation, so Jim McKendie did communicate, communicate this to the committee, did resign at the end of December. He was our network administrator, he was commuting an hour and ten minutes a day. He found work that was closer to home and I think doubled his salary.
Probably wasn't education.
So he, yeah, he, so he took that opportunity. And as a result, we, we have moved to contracted services for managing our wireless switches and some of our network operations, and so now we have managed services for key critical aspects of our network, and that is a direction that we will continue to move forward with in the future. We think that is more sustainable when you have one person who's the keystone to the knowledge base. It's very difficult when that person leaves, when you have managed services, you have a team behind the organization, and people will come and go from that managed services team, but it's something that we don't have to procure and think about. So I think it is, although Jim did a great job, I think it, it does speak to the challenge of having one person in that role, and now we have a team of experts who are helping us troubleshoot and, and build our networks.
Roger?
Through the chair, so what firm have we contacted with?
It's Wally Computers, Wally Computing.
Wally Computers.
Out of where?
Good question. Frame?
Home offices out west, there's, there's a hub near here, I want to say, just north on four ninety-five, not far.
Thank you.
So they are a known vendor to us, we've been using them for many years, so it's, we know the quality, the expertise, and their attention to detail and responsiveness has been outstanding in our work with, with Wally Computers, so it was a natural partnership that we continue.
Any other questions? All right, then moving on to action on minutes.
So just one, one last.
One last, sorry.
I'll be quick. So Susan O'Keefe, so Susan O'Keefe is a familiar name to many of you, she was the early childhood coordinator for a number of years in our, in our system for Northborough and Southborough, she retired, and since her retirement, she's been our out of district coordinator, so she has been attending a lot of the out of district placement team meetings and has, has done excellent job managing those placements and supporting students in those placements and been an advocate for the district, but she has retired and retired again.
Retired again, okay, re-retired.
That is a loss.
We should, we should thank her for, thank her for her continued service, even after retiring. Okay, now, action on the minutes. So we are going to, I'm going to ask that we jointly, we package these together, the combined open mini, open meeting minutes of September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and the combined open meeting minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-three. Does anybody have any corrections, updates, questions?
I feel like something had to change, that's why we didn't do September? Did it get changed?
Yes, okay. Okay. Okay, they're being done, I'm going to ask for a motion from region.
I'll move to approve the combined open meeting minutes of September twenty, twenty twenty-three, as well as December sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Moved by Paul, seconded by?
Second.
Chris. Uh, Northborough.
So moved.
So moved by Lauren, seconded by?
Second.
Bryce. Southborough.
So moved.
So moved by Roger, seconded by?
Second.
Chelsea. And Union. Somebody, somebody move.
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Kelly, seconded by?
Second.
Roger?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Roger. Okay. Any other questions? All right, roll call vote from the region, starting with Matt.
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen Polachko, yes, that is unanimous, Northborough.
Joan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, passes for Northborough.
Southborough? All those in favor, that passes unanimously from Southborough, and Union.
Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, passes for Union.
Okay, so we passed both the combined open meeting minutes. Excellent, thank you very much for your, all of your cooperations. Distribution of Asbit Valley Collaborative twenty twenty-three annual report and financial statements for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Sure, so as you are aware, we are a member of the Asbit Valley Collaborative. I do sit as a board member alongside other superintendents who are members of the, of the collaborative, and we do monitor finances, we do sit through their financial audits, and this is just a report to, to share that they are in good financial position, they are well managed, and there were no findings in the audit report from the auditors, so it continues to be a value to the district in terms of a variety of aspects from professional learning to transportation to special education placements and job alikes, and, you know, they continue to do an excellent job and, and serve the students well, and it is important that we continue our membership with the Asbit Valley Collaborative, and if you have any questions about the documents, I'd be happy to answer.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, excellent. Then, moving on to public comment, public comment. Okay, um.
That's absolutely fine. Does she need a mic?
It'll catch it.
It'll catch it? Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. So my name's Christine Austin, I have two daughters who graduated from.
Will you state your address?
Oh, Christine Austin, forty-eight Meadow Road, Northborough, and I have two daughters who graduated from Algonquin, one in twenty twenty, which was interesting, and one in twenty twenty-two, and then I have a son who's a freshman now at Algonquin. And I just wanted to share, I'm, I'm a Muslim, we have a Muslim family, and I just wanted to share my experience as, you know, what we have to go through having children that come to public school. I teach at an Islamic school, enough where my children went up until eighth grade, so my children have only gone to Algonquin, but I know other families who, who go to public school, you know, in Northborough and Southborough and in the middle school. And I just wanted you to be aware of, when we have our religious holidays, my girl's experience was, like, my daughter had to, you know, we, we kept her home so that she could celebrate with us. I explained to all of her teachers that this was a religious holiday, I explained that this is like our Christmas, because we, right now, it's the month of Ramadan, and so we fast, and it's, it's hard, like, we fast all day, and at the time, this was, Ramadan was like in June, now it's in March, so it's a little easier, but it's still, it's hard. And so like, that holiday at the end of Ramadan is, is a really important holiday, and my daughter stayed home from school, I always kept my kids home from school, I would email their teachers and just explain that this is like our Christmas, and this is the end of Ramadan, this is a really important holiday for us. But my daughter's experience was that she still had teachers, you know, telling her, okay, well, make sure you do your work, make, don't fall behind, make sure you, you know, she was even emailing her and telling her, like, make sure you stay on top of this, this is due when you come back. And I just, I just wanted you to be aware that that happens, and I know this year, we did wellness days, like, I'm planning to keep my son out of school for, for Eid, which is coming up on April tenth, and that's a wellness day this year, but I still don't know if that's going to be honored by all of his teachers, and if he's going to get emails during our holiday saying, make sure you don't forget your homework, this is due when you come back. So, and I missed, I was late, so I missed your discussion, and I know wellness days was on the agenda for today, so I don't really know what was said. I did notice that there's fewer wellness days next year, and Eid is not one of them, so my concern that I want to share with you is that, you know, there's, there's Muslim families who have, some parents decide to send their kids to school, and, and I know that's a personal choice, but it stinks that parents have to do that. And then some parents like me, we pull our kids out, but then there's the risk that you have that teacher that won't drop it and, and won't give them the day off. So I just wanted to share that with you and ask you to consider, really what I want is I want Eid to be off, Westborough asked for it off, they have it on their calendar off, Hopkinton has it off, and so I'm asking you to consider that, I know it's a big ask, and I know that, you know, you risk, if you let one person have a day off, then other people might come forward, but I'm still here asking you to consider it, or, or just something to make Eid more special for your Muslim students that come here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We hope that wasn't too terrible.
It was a little scary, but you guys were very nice.
Thank you.
Yes.
You want to come up?
Mitch Cohen, twelve Minty Street in, in Northborough, I do happen to be on the select board for Northborough, but I'm not speaking in that capacity just as an individual. I wasn't planning to, to make any public comment tonight, but after the, what I think is excellent and important comment that was just made, I wanted to follow that up. I sent an email that I hope reached all of you in the last couple of days, echoing exactly what Westborough had done, as far as adding Eid and, and I'm blanking on the, the other holiday they just added, they've already had the Wally on their calendar for a couple of years. I think that's the right direction that Northborough and Southborough and the region should move in, not away from that. I'm, I'm hoping, it's hard to understand exactly the, the change in thought process as to where the wellness days, how that might lead to that discussion next year. I've certainly been a key commenter on that item over the last several years, I certainly will be again when the school calendar questions come up next year, and I, I'm just honestly very, very happy to see fellow Northborough and Southborough residents speak, you know, about this, this very important issue. I, I fear we are moving, if we take away holidays as opposed to honoring additional, we're moving in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any from the table? Okay. There being, one more. One more public comment.
Timely audience sharing this evening, so thank you. We will be convening the calendar study group to really think about the twenty-five, twenty-six, it sounds like it's a long ways away. So we, I have reached out to the members who served on that study group last year to see who's interested in continuing, and we'll be inviting new members to join that conversation and discussion. So there will be opportunities for input, feedback, perspective, learning in, in the next month or two. The goal is to have the conversations so that in the fall of twenty-four, the draft calendar is reflective of the feedback of the community, the committees, in terms of what the calendar could look like. So stay tuned.
Okay. Any other public comment? Lauren?
I think I'd just like to follow up with Bryce's comments, and I think that as we continue this conversation about wellness days and religious observance, I think we need to go back to that religious observance policy, so I would like to see it come back to the, the subcommittee and take a look at, you know, the comments that were made last year, I think it was maybe this time last year, I can't remember, what conversation happened in the community, and just take a look and see, is it robust enough? What can we add? What can we address?
May I ask a question?
Okay, yes, Matt, then Bryce.
Can you remind me, are we allowed to ask school families what their religion is?
We don't.
So my, if we can, I wish I suspected that was the case, my question is, actually, I feel like, and I find myself, I've spoken on this, I, I probably lean towards adding religious holidays as well and not taking away. Only open to taking away if we take the opportunity to educate when our fellow students are not in the school building because they're participating in religious holidays, we need to begin educating the students that are not participating as to the significance of those holidays, so it's kind of like a, a joint day of, of recognition of the significance of the, of the respective holiday. I just wonder, I feel like schools are here to serve the community. If we don't know who our communities, which religious holidays they observe, because, because we're not allowed to ask them, how can we be truly responsive to meeting the needs of the community? I feel like it's a.
Yeah, I mean, I think it is a great question, I think that, you know, we can look at our demographics in terms of, you know, race and ethnicity and make some, some ideas around.
Assumptions, they would be assumptions.
I think that responsible, responsibility of the school, of the school committee in terms of calendaring in the district is to make sure that there's a hundred and eighty days of learning that takes place in a calendar year. Outside of that, there is flexibility, but I think the conversation really needs to be, where are those days, those hundred and eighty days best placed to maximize learning? And I think there's, there are a lot of opportunities for discussions around adding, adding other observances. I think part of it is really getting to know, you know, the calendar study group, really understanding what it means to observe particular observance. What does it mean? Does it start in the afternoon? Does it, is it a full day? Is it a three-day celebration? Is, you know, what, what happens? What's the expectation of students who are observing or practicing their religion? So there's a lot of information we need to gather to make in, inform decisions around, around what the calendar could look like, but ultimately, it's a hundred and eighty days, you have to place the hundred and eighty days in the calendar, and that is, that is a legal requirement.
Okay, any other questions?
I was just also going to comment on that answer, the, at the high school level, you need to be on differences and some other advocacy clubs, where minority groups have done great work this year in sending out, in weekly updates that the school already has, adding information about religious holidays for each week or month. On top of that, I was going to present, next week, the RSC meeting, but the library for Ramadan in particular is always open for students that are practicing Muslim, and they often will send out announcements to students, and our students are always encouraged of any religion to come and learn more from others about what that experience is like and what practicing looks like, and I think that overall, although it's not perfect, I do know that myself and a, a number of other students have also been able to advocate for students in classes where teachers may not understand fully what religious observances look like, and be able to really communicate students' needs on behalf of them, particularly when they're out of school. And I also know, me and some of my friends have been able to contact classmates that missed school because of religious observance and work with them outside of school, or to make sure they can catch up in that class in the coming weeks.
So Bryce, you were next.
I would not, you've made a good point, my head is down.
Okay. Okay, so any other public comment not related to that? There being none, I'm going to, now, Southborough's going to stay in session, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for.
We're gonna, we're gonna remove ourselves from recess.
Are we gonna adjourn and come back?
Well, because you don't start till seven, so I don't know, it's up to you.
So do you want to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, so, do I hear motions to adjourn, starting with region? Moved by Kathy? Seconded by Paul. Do I hear Northborough?
So moved.
Moved by Bryce, seconded by? Lauren? Southborough? Moved by?
Kamali.
Kamali, seconded by? What?
I was just saying so moved.
Oh, okay, seconded by, I didn't hear.
Z.
Oh, Z, okay, and Union? Moved by?
Kelly.
Kelly, seconded by?
I'll second.
Uh, Jen, thank you. Okay, so, any discussion? I didn't think so. Roll call vote, starting with region, Matt?
Yes.
Kathleen? Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathleen is a yes, region is adjourned, okay, Northborough? Joan?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Myself is a yes, Northborough is adjourned. Southborough? All those in favor? Southborough is adjourned? I'm sorry, Kamali, do you want to say that? Union?
Union, Joan?
Bryce?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Myself said no, no, I'm just kidding, yes. Union's adjourned. All right, we are all adjourned. Six forty-three.